Good morning. It is Tuesday, August 31st, and I will call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand if you are able and join us in the same Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is one change to today's agenda. The presentation from Collins, which is number six, is being pulled from today's agenda and will be moved to a later date. But that is their motion to adopt today's agenda.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Merkin?
Hi.
Basil?
Hi.
Edens?
Hi.
Now's the time for a public comment. This is the comment period for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If there's anyone who would like to make public comments, if you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand function and unmute yourself, or if you're in the public meeting room, just move forward. And I am not seeing anyone running to make comments this morning, so we will close public comments. And then we will move on to the presentation on the Mid-Iowa Planning Alliance for Community Development. I have Brenda Dreyer and Gunnar Olsen.
If you'd like to sit up here.
Sure.
Good morning.
Hello, good morning. Are you available for the presentation? How would you like to proceed? We'll talk a little bit over your.
I think we'd prefer that you keep it on. And then if you just want to introduce yourselves, and then we'll go ahead with your presentation.
Happy to do so. Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Gunnar Olsen with the Twin Aria Metropolitan Planning Organization, or MPO. And we've been behind the effort to create an Economic Development District, which is being named MIPA, or Mid-Iowa Planning Alliance for Community Development. With me is Andrew Collins. He's had a lot of experience in this realm and previous jobs and has been instrumental to all of us. And I don't see Todd on our Zoom call, but he does want to send his greetings. He's the Executive Director at the MPO and has been behind this as well. So I will ask you to go to the next slide. Today, I'm going to walk through some background on what an EDD is and why we should care about it. We'll do an update on where we are in the process, and the goodness is we're quite a ways along. And then we'll talk about a planning document. We'll look ahead at next steps. I'll address some questions that we've replied frequently, and then I'll open up the conversation. Next slide, please. One more, please. As you probably know, because I know we've talked to you previously, and I should say thank you very much for your earlier support and allowing us to go forward. Central Iowa is the only region in the state of Iowa without an Economic Development District. As you can see on the map on the left there, there are economic development districts nearly every type of region in the country, whether it's urban, rural, or a combination thereof. And so we have the unique opportunity to pursue an EDD designation because of the recent events, namely the pandemic, as well as the direction that went through some of our counties. Next slide. So an economic development is a couple of different things. Number one is a designation. And that designation comes from the Economic Development Administration, where they say that this region has economic distress, and that helps give us a way up on pursuing funding opportunities. And the other thing is that it is synonymous with an Economic Development District Organization, the organization that helps facilitate and support those economic development activities through that office. And these are typically comprised of multiple jurisdictional entities. So a few things it is not. It's not a Chamber of Commerce. It's not a business of directly recruiting business, not like the Economic Development Offices at your region, not a council of governments. It can be a standalone entity. It's really a support organization for local jurisdictions. Next slide. There's a handful of benefits. And I'll start with the regional plan. And we'll talk a little bit more about this later, but we have put together a comprehensive economic development strategy that is a requirement is also a benefit, because we can now point to this when applying for federal funding and say, the region has come together and identified these as regional priorities. And that signals to them that it's significant and that it's more worthy of funding. So moving us to funding. There's a few different funding streams that start to open up. But the most critical one is that we will be able to provide additional support so that we can help organizations and jurisdictions, especially those without a lot of staff, pursue funding opportunities for economic development projects. The other types of funding are, there is kind of one-off funding. So sometimes there's a surge in stimulus spending, and sometimes they will send money directly to EDDs, no match to just spend for whatever the patient calls for. As an example, with the, was it the CARES Act? Yeah, with the CARES Act, Central Iowa missed out on nearly half a million dollars that would have came with no strings. Those went to other EDDs throughout the state. We missed out because we didn't have.
How much did you say?
It's on the screen there, so you should have it in your slide deck. It's $470,000. And then the last thing is the EDD entity is eligible to join a program through the EDA staff, where they will match dollar for dollar up to $70,000 or $140,000 total to pay for administrative support. And the reason that's significant is, especially for those rural towns without much staff, they now have somebody that they can go to to help navigate some rather, frankly, complex federal processes in order to get some money. And so that brings us to the last thing, is that funding does help with that staff support. Next slide. I'm not going to read through all these, and you should have them in your packets here. But just to note that there was, one, I want you to see how much money has been going around. And these are not typical times because of all the stimulus dollars right now. But it does show the urgency of having it in place for the next time something like this happens, as well as, I think this shows the types of things that can be funded. And what I want you to take away from this is, one, these are things that help support the, typically it's community infrastructure that supports jobs. And then the other thing that I would take away from this is resiliency. So like the floodproofing water supply, that type of resiliency in order to ensure and protect the jobs that already exist. Next slide. Oh wait, you know what? Go back one more. On the left-hand column right there, we did a calculation where we looked at all the spending for a certain period, and in January of this year, of EDA funds. And again, this is atypical because of all the stimulus spending. But you can see that the per capita spending was six times higher outside of Central Iowa than inside Central Iowa. And we think at least a part of that is due to the fact that there was no EDD working actively on behalf of the region to bring those dollars in. So update where we are in the process. There are a few basic things that it's going to take. We need the county, each county in the district to be a part of a presidentially declared disaster declaration that was done due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We need to have, we need to create an entity that would represent it. We need to have public-private representation on the board. We need the support of all the counties within the EDD. I'll say thank you again for Story County offering a resolution of support earlier this year. We need to have concurrence with the state. And I'm happy to tell you that we received a letter from Governor Reynolds yesterday, so we can check that box as well. We also will need to procure a local match. And so it will be optional as to whether or not entities or local jurisdictions join this. If they do, it will be some per capita fee that they'll have to do. We're not talking large dollar amounts here. They're pretty small, actually.
Can you give some kind of an idea of what you mean by pretty small?
Sure. Can we, I'd like to jump ahead a little bit, and I might bounce around a little bit.
If it's too late, you can talk about.
Okay. I have it spelled out here with some examples. See, I've got those. So broadly speaking, there are four phases. And the first phase was wayne's work. Is there interest in doing this and all? We answered that question. You helped answer that question when the supervisor said, yes, there is. And then we have entered Phase Two, which is the creation of the entity. And we are almost done. We have met nearly all the criteria for forming an EDD. We've formed an entity. We have established a lease of rough infrastructure. We have formed a board, and we are nearly done with SETS. Document is up for public comment right now. It will be finalized in early September. So we are on the precipice of entering Phase Three, which is the hurry-up-and-wait phase. Once we submit our application for designation from the EDA, it can be two to three months before we get word. It has to go all the way to their Deputy Administrator. And the reason it takes so long is because once the designation is made, it is permanent. So then that brings us to Phase Four. Once that, once we have that designation, then we can apply for that partnership program, start to bring in some of those dollars, and hire staff in order to help support the local jurisdictions. Okay, next slide. Thank you. So I'll say it again. Thank you very much. We really appreciated your support. And it was very pleasing that there is unanimous support from every Board of Supervisors in the region. So that's a really strong sign. Next slide. Oh, yes. So we had an early meeting with the state, and as mentioned, we just got the letter yesterday. So we made that request, and we just got it yesterday. Next slide. So the planning documents. We have developed a comprehensive economic development strategy. You might be familiar with long-range transportation plans in your region. It's kind of like that, where it takes these broad goals, but rather than transportation, it would be related to economic development activities. We have a 30-day public comment period that we're in the middle of right now. That will end later this week on September 2nd. We held a public meeting on the 24th. And then the other thing that we'll do at a later date, because we can, and I should just pause and say, this entire timeline that we've been talking about has been expedited in order to, as quickly as possible, put ourselves in a position to begin receiving federal funding. You know, if this were normal times, we might have done an 18-month process. But we did it in less than...
Six days, months?
Yeah, six days, months, less than a year. Definitely less than a year in order to get it done. So, but anyway, we can, we're going to add a project list as an appendix later. And so that, anytime you would go after funding, you can say, yep, that's part of the regional plan. The region agrees this is a priority. So if you want to take a look at that in depth, it is available at newly launched website, Next slide. I won't read this entirety. You have this in your packets. But this is a vision statement. More or less, it says, we have it, we are pretty great here. There are things we need to work on. And it acknowledges what's good and what can be used for it. Next slide. Again, I'm not going to read all these to you, but these are the goals and objectives that have been established in the SETS. And assuming that goes, assuming we don't change any of these through public comment, I haven't got any comments to the contrary. As you can see, these are pretty broad. They're not overly specific and would limit things. Really, what this, the goal is to cast a broad envelope so that jurisdictions in the region would be able to meet these goals with a variety of projects. Next slide. So next steps. To recap, we are coming out of Phase Two, entering Phase Three. Next slide. So we are done with SETS draft. We have the comment period. We're in the process of, we've incorporated the entity with the state. We're reviewing bylaws right now. We'll be submitting IRS status next week. We have gotten concurrence from the state through the governor's office. And then early next week, we're going to knock out the bylaws, the approval of the SETS, and then the approval of the designation application process itself. Next slide. So September 8th is the day that, you know, fate willing, all these ribbons will be tied into a neat bow, and we will make that submission to the EDD on September 8th. And then again, we're in that position of, being in a position of waiting. While we're in that waiting position, we are going to initiate conversations with all the jurisdictions in the region. There are several, several is an understatement. I think it's 89 cities and seven counties would be eligible members. And it will be at that time that we'll more formally talk about and asking for membership. Next slide. I do want to reiterate that we feel really good about the work that has happened here because by virtue of having the SETS, even if it hasn't been adopted by the EDA yet, we can still point to the fact that the region has come together, identified goals, and so that as there are jurisdictions in the region that we're helping some of them, they are going after some of the stimulus dollars that are flowing through the EDA right now through the American Rescue Plan. So we feel really good about going really fast. I can tell you that Indianapolis, as an example, was pursuing the EDD. They're at least a year behind us. And so we feel really good about having accelerated our time. Next slide. Okay, three last questions. And this is where I'm going to get to the question of fees. So what's the relationship between the MPO and the EDD? There are going to be different organizations, different boards, dues, bylaws, et cetera. The relationship will be contractual in nature. So the EDD will effectively hire the MPO to administer the entity. And this is a similar arrangement to what the MPO has with the Regional RPA or the Central Iowa Regional Transportation Planning Alliance that helps do the long-range transportation plan for those towns. Next slide. So here we're getting to the question, how much will this cost? And I've got a couple of different answers to this question. You recall, the partnership program to the EDA offers up to $70,000 annually, and that needs to be matched dollar for dollar at a local level. And so that $140,000 annual budget would cover the total staffing costs. Next slide. So the real question that we're getting is, what is it going to cost my jurisdiction? And as mentioned, there is no requirement to join. So if you want to, that's a local decision. There's also no deadline to join. If you, if we try to predict the future a little bit, we can say conservatively that we think maybe 15 cents per person. That's a pretty conservative estimate. We won't really know until we know how many numbers we have, and then we can calculate a number. But at 15 cents per person, the largest metropolitan area or the largest jurisdiction in our area is looking at about $30,000 annually. And some of the smaller ones, $4,000 or less, are looking at $600, you know, dollars or less. And from every conversation that we've had so far, the reaction to those numbers have been, why wouldn't we? So not to say that we won't meet a jurisdiction yet that says this is too much, but we have not a contract yet.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes, please.
Just for clarification. So the participating jurisdictions. So would you be asking Story County to contribute, and then each of the communities within Story County to also contribute? Or is it just the county?
So the way we would structure it is that all the cities would have the option locally to do that. If Story County wanted to do it, they could do it separately, but they would be, it would not include incorporated areas. So only unincorporated areas for the county in terms of fees.
But that would not preclude you, if you wanted to, to pay for some of the smaller communities. That does happen in other areas.
Correct.
There's a lot of options.
We're basically leaving it up to lowercase county. Here, everyone in this county, you guys decide how you want to pay the dues, and we're agnostic as far as the names on the chart.
So then as far as the population, it would only be, if Story County decided just to do the unincorporated, it would just be the population of the unincorporated areas?
Yeah. Okay, so here's our initial approach to fees. Because we don't know membership yet, and we've talked about 15 cents this time, what we're saying is, for year one, which is partial, we're guessing it's going to be about six months. And year two, we'll use that 15 cents per person. And then by year three, membership will have settled. And we can do, and this will be a board decision, not a staff decision. The MIPA board can decide, well, we're just going to keep those extra funds in a reserve fund, or we're going to use that to buy down rates in the next year. But either way, we anticipate there will likely be an adjustment by year three once membership is really established. Next slide. What kind of organization will it be? We had council review this, and the recommendation is for a 504 nonprofit. This does meet EDA requirements. We should note that we have been in consultation with EDA staff every step of the way. They have been fantastic, actually. They've been really trying to land this plane. They want to see this happen. And they're happy with this. It is much quicker and simpler than to 2080, which would require just a whole different logistical challenge of getting us to this point. It really would have delayed us by at least another year, I would guess. We can incorporate using the temporary board of directors. And in fact, that's what we're going to be doing. It will allow jurisdictions to easily join at any point. So the joining process is very easy with this setup. We were not determining membership or fees in order to form it. So it's basically going to be created, and then we'll start talking membership. Next slide. So the question about the board comes up quite often. And we're starting with the temporary board of directors. We had established a steering committee. These are mostly economic development professionals from jurisdictions throughout the region, with some private representation as well. We also have a couple of elected officials on there as well. And we're using them as a temporary board of directors in order to get the entity off the ground. And then the permanent board will be established after the entity is designated as an EDD, membership is determined, et cetera. Basically, the big difference is, once there's real money flowing, once jurisdictions are putting money in, once we're having money come in from the EDA, that's when we'll want to make sure that that board is established. The difference between the board and director, well, I should back up and say, we will also have an executive committee to help oversee day-to-day operations. We think that's going to be important because we also think it's important that all jurisdictions who are members also have representation on the board. As previously mentioned, there are 89 cities and seven counties. So hypothetically, we could have 96-plus board members, which becomes very unruly in terms of navigating day-to-day conversations. So that executive committee is going to be important for just those day-to-day operational functions. Next slide. Will the board of directors control grant spending? This is a question that we get a lot, especially from people who are engaged with our primary organization, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. For our organization, the federal money comes into us, and then policymakers then make the decisions of how it is sub-allocated to jurisdictions throughout the region. And so it is a very political board. This board is going to operate very differently. And the reason for that is because the, if Story County wants to go for an application or wants to go for money, MIPA's job is to say, that's great. How can we help? And the application is between you and the entity that was called EDA in this case. There's no gatekeeper function at an EDD. That's not what it exists for. And so the EDD board then is not, doesn't have a lot of political weight, so to speak, because it's not controlling where those dollars come into play. Now, there will be those times, and these are maybe once every 10 years, where there would be an influx of money from a stimulus package like we saw from the CARES Act. In that case, the board would have a negotiation. We'd have to probably, I would guess, we'd convene a special board meeting for that purpose. Let's see. I think I covered most everything. The board will also have financial oversight of the budget. But again, that's kind of an annual thing that needs to be taken care of. Okay, I think that's it for that slide. Thank you. Yes, we are going to put together a project list. We're going to finalize that. Early next year, we'll be having those conversations concurrently with membership conversations, because we are going to be having those conversations with each individual jurisdiction. As mentioned, benefit here really just showing that your projects are part of regional priorities. It also is important to note that you don't have to have a project in the plan in order to go for funding for it. So if something comes up or whatnot, you don't have to have it. Okay, next slide. Eligibility parameters. We kind of covered this. Basically have to be EDD member to have a project on the list. Yeah, I don't think, I think we've covered all that. Next slide. I'm just going to share this real briefly, that the EDA has investment priorities. And this is a role that EDD staff hope to be able to play as. A lot of times jurisdictions will have, hey, we've got this really good project. It's going to have the economic development. But they need to understand what slice of it is really going to be eligible and how it can fit it within parameters of those funding pieces. So I just want to share this to begin to show what EDA likes to spend its money. Okay, next slide. We have reached the end of the slides then. And we would be happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you for your presentation. Question?
I've got a few. The Economic Development District doesn't have staff. Contracts with MPO, correct?
That's how it's going to be set up, correct?
So the Economic Development District is basically, I mean, that's, the board is the only entity of the district itself. Make contracts with the MPO.
Correct.
So what will $140,000 annually, how will that be used?
So the $140,000 is going to be used to hire one staff person to help support.
Okay.
But I want to call it a full-time staff improvement or an FTE. The advantage of doing it this way, well, let me back up and talk about an alternative. You know, MIPA board could decide, well, Andrew and Gunnar, they just need to bugger off, and we're going to hire somebody. They could elect to do that. That is, that is the board's will to do that if they so choose. What we see as an advantage of the arrangement that we're proposing with the MPO doing it administratively is that not only you're not getting one person, you're getting a breadth of experiences and a full-time staff. And so we can, you know, if there's a piece where we need this person, we can pull it in. So that's why we're proposing this one.
It also, that $140,000 is not just staffing. It's the full amount of money it costs to have an organization that includes audits, that includes accounting, like all of those ancillary-type things are included in that.
Does some of the overhead would be spread into this as well as all that?
Yes, yeah, that $140 is an all-inclusive number.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
What specifically, you say it's going to provide support and assistance to jurisdictions in gaining federal funding? What specifically will be done? What kind of duties will be done to help?
Sure. So we are, because of the times, and we've talked about our being on a very accelerated timeline, we are in the process of creating the entity and still trying to go after some of the dollars in the American Rescue Plan. We're just doing it because it's the right thing to do, even though we're not, we haven't set up numbers or anything like that. So what we're doing for this process is, we, and I say we, Andrew really, dug deep into the notices of funding opportunities. Then we did a scan where we asked for jurisdiction to send us projects that could potentially be eligible. And we received several, not a ton, but several. And then we reviewed those. We had a meeting with EDA staff, and the EDA staff, the way they work is, there's the regional office, covers 10 states, including Iowa. And there's an investment committee at that regional level. And there are staff at the EDA whose job it is to basically pitch projects to that investment committee. And so what we were able to do on behalf of the region was have a list of projects and talk through them with EDA staff. And we got answers like, that's not going to fly. This is really good. And then this one right here could be really good if you refocused it to ask for this instead of this. And so then we supplied that feedback to those local jurisdictions, and it told them a few things. It told them, wouldn't we be wasting our time to pursue this grant application? Or what could we do better in order to have a more successful application?
And I'd like to point out, too, I think you all have probably heard the term EDA before. I mean, the AMES Chamber does an amazing job working with jurisdictions and working with these sorts of projects currently. I mean, they really do a great job. Our role isn't to supplant that in any way. It's to help them do and manage this. Because applying for a grant is one thing. Managing it even on the backend is another. And federal funding is, as you all, as you very much well know, is very different. And each agency has their own requirements. And so being an EDD, we not only have a conduit to their staff and talk to them regularly, we're also going to be working on other projects in the region, which helps us become much more familiarized with the process specific to EDA funding that otherwise wouldn't happen because you may do a project once every five years. We may be doing a project once, twice a year.[1760.74] And so it just helps facilitate that process and help support not only local jurisdictions, but the work the Ames Chamber does on a daily basis.
So here are a couple of things. You know, I would summarize what you talked about in a couple of things. One is expertise and the other is connections.
Yes.
Are, how about grant writing?
Yes. Yeah, I didn't get there.
Yes, so, yes. And so what I would like to point out too is that we talk about EDA a lot because this hardship program is their program. But they also take a very holistic approach to economic development. And want to emphasize that when you're hiring an extra staff person, or getting myself and Gunnar also on board with doing this sorts of things. If you want to write a grant to EDA, or community wants to write a grant to EDA, we'll help with that. They want to write a grant to IEDA, Iowa Economic Development Board, we'll help with that too. The short answer is just yes. Grantsmanship administration is all part of that. Because economic development is not just EDA money. There's a lot of money out there. I have to help support that, those activities.
I've come to think of it as a matchmaker. That's kind of the function is.
Yes.
We know the jurisdictions, we know the projects, and we know the funding pots. And our job is to understand those two and then find places where they match up and then try to kind of.
And then to also help administer the funds once they're received. So it won't be like, okay, you got your grant, bye.
Well, I think that's going to be situational. I think some jurisdictions would say, we're going to take care of us because we'd rather do that. And we'll say, okay, great. In other cases, jurisdictions say, please, dear heaven, let's take, you do it. And we'll say, okay.
It's really dependent upon jurisdiction.
And the equivalent, one FTE is going to do this for 89 cities and seven counties?
No, so that's going to hire additional. That's a good point because I don't think that's possible. But in addition, you'll have the support of MPO staff as well. So I'll be working on it. Gunnar will be working on it. We have other staff members. It really depends on the activity type too. You know, we have other staff members doing other things.
See, I didn't say one FTE. I said the equivalent of one FTE.
Sorry. We, yes, that's a good point. It is more than, I think it's going to be more than one equivalent that will work on it.
That's what I was getting at.
It's just, yes, the money will be used to help hire an FTE, but we'll have more than that into it because there's just so much going on in our region. Yes, agreed.
Yeah, and I think the other part of that answer is that the board will grow into that. How much support do you want? The board could elect to do more.
Yeah.
That's up to them. And if there is support for it, well, okay, then right, do more.
You mentioned that Central Island was down to about $470,000. It's just because we didn't have the designation?
Yes, correct.
Really?
Yeah, it was just direct deposit into bank accounts here you guys give.
So an EDD with 40,000 people, four counties in Iowa, got the same amount. And they were able to spend that. And I will note too, that does happen. In the floods of 2009, a similar thing happened as well. In a lot of areas, hired economic recovery coordinators with that money. So EDA does give out lots of money as major disasters happen across the state to help with recovery. So it's not just developments, that resiliency part they Gunnar mentioned.
I think it's really exciting. I don't know how many things you could possibly do, Andrew. So, yeah, so I'm right on with another person.
Me too.
All things.
Can we go back to when you would leave the decision on a local match?
Yes.
I didn't grab, I had a copy of PowerPoint, but it's back on my desk, so I.
Our effort is to try to have conversation with you as you're working towards your next budget. So that would be having another conversation with you this fall. And then we would want a decision as part of your next budget cycle.
And we did mention that, Gunnar mentioned a half-year. And I think you keyed in on that, January to June. We're going to stay fiscal year. So I just explained that we don't know when our designation is going to happen. And so it could take longer and then it might, that timeline is dependent on EDA. So we don't know. We're assuming, just because, I mean, that's the earliest scenario that that could happen, is that we might give, potentially give grant money to administer this effort in January, but it could also be May and it could be April and then it could be June. It just really depends on how quickly the federal government moves. And so we just don't know. So, but we are, and as Gunnar mentioned, going to engage in conversations to very much get into your budgets, hopefully, starting next July 1.
And have you done presentations in much of this, in larger cities?
So we have started some of these on a reactionary basis so far. And to be frank with you, because we've had our eyes down trying to get to this point. Getting, like I said, we've been pushing really hard to get everything lined up. And the reason for that is because if we can get everything submitted to the EDA prior to the start of the next federal fiscal year, they can then budget for money for this EDD in the following year. So if we didn't get all that stuff done, we're going to delay the start of being fully operational by at least another year. And so we've been intentional and it's not for lack of wanting to get on top of you. It's been, we need to knock off these pieces. But we're to that stage now where we're going to be done with that part. And so we will be spending the next several months going out, meeting with jurisdiction, having those conversations. And I did want to circle back to the piece on the funding. The other thing is, you know, we could potentially be in a position where a local jurisdiction would want to have a contract with us to do a comprehensive plan or something like that. And it would be beneficial to them because it would probably be less expensive than going through a private contractor. So depending on how many contracts like that come in could also dictate how much staff we would eventually have. So it's going to be, really is going to be in response to needs to jurisdictions. That's really what staff is going to be reflecting on.
So it would just be helpful for us, I think, in terms of how we would approach the membership specifically to know what our larger communities in Story County are doing to the city of Ames.
Well, how about we do this then? That's really good feedback for us, is we'll try to get those larger ones scheduled sooner rather than later. And we'll continue to keep you in the loop. Leanne has also been very involved from your staff, as well as Brenda Dryer has been very involved. And so we'll continue to keep you posted. And you can always reach out to them because they're pretty tied in with this whole process.
I think that would be great.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for the time.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, moving on, agency reports, consideration of the 8:24 minutes.
Oh, we look for book of 8:24 minutes. Those are made in some fashion, so.
Yeah, I'll second that. Basil, aye. Devin's aye. Merkin, aye. Epstein, aye. We move on to consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel action as submitted.
Second. Then moved and seconded, Merkin, aye. Basil, aye. Devin's aye. Consideration of claims. Move approval of claims.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, Basil, aye. Merkin, aye. Devin's aye. Consent agenda, is anyone pulling anything from today's consent agenda?
No.
No? Okay.
I don't want approval of the consent agenda items as listed. Second.
Then moved and seconded, Merkin, aye. Basil, aye. Devin's aye. All right, next we're up for public hearing items. The second consideration of ordinance number 295, commending chapter 32, the road identification and address number. Good morning, Merkin.
Good morning, board, how are you?
Good.
So this is the second hearing for the ordinance 295, commending chapter 32. So the first consideration, no changes since that were proposed. Didn't get any comments from that. So because of that, typically, you all waived the third consideration of the ordinance.
Any questions for Merkin before opening the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. If anyone's on Zoom that would like to speak, please use the raise hand function or if you're in the public meeting room here, come forward to make comments. And I will wait a few minutes to see if anyone would like to make comments. I know that Zoom can take a minute, so. All right, it's looking like nobody is willing to make public comments. It's the correct phrase, okay? So we will close the public hearing. Any additional comments?
I would move approval of ordinance 295, commending chapter 32, road identification and address number. So still the Story County vote ordinance is second consideration and the anyways third consideration.
Second. Then moved and seconded, Basil, aye. Merkin, aye. Devin, aye.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. Next round to additional items. Supervisor Merkin, I know you put this on the agenda for the workforce retraining initiative.
Certainly. We approved the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the program that the Ames Chamber Commerce Foundation has submitted to us. And this is simply the contract, which would set the stage for it moving forward. And Brenda Dryer from the chambers here, if you have any questions from her.
Any questions? I don't, and I believe you had stated that our civil attorney demand had reviewed this already as well.
Yes. No, I don't have any questions, just thank you for all the work. I just mentioned that we are going to do this tomorrow, right? Tomorrow to talk to them about whether they'd be interested in doing something similar.
Great.
That's great. Ready for motion?
Yes.
Okay, I would move approval of a round of understanding between the Ames Chamber of Commerce Foundation and Story County for the workforce retraining initiative program. I would second.
Then moved and seconded, Merkin, aye. Basil, aye. Devin's aye. Moving on, we have no departmental reports or other reports. Any upcoming agenda items? I don't have the particular time either. So move on to public forum number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of open meetings law. That may do so in the future. If anyone would like to make comments, please come forward or use the raise hand button on the Zoom. I think that Brenda Dryer has come forward this morning.
So, good morning, Story County Board Supervisor. Just a few things on the agenda today that we have interest in at our offices. For the record, Brenda Dryer, Ames Chamber Commerce. And so thank you for your attention to the EDO discussion as well as the support on the retraining initiative. We do have somebody hired to fill that new role. And we'll be making announcement very, very soon about who that is. And they'll be starting on September 20th because already things are really busy with some of the excitement coming out of your dialogue on the new program. So thank you again for your action on the contract. And it's my pleasure this morning to introduce you to Steele Harder. Steele joined our offices last week and will be assuming the outreach responsibilities that we do on your behalf in the rural communities under 2,000 here in Story County. And so in addition to that, I'll be doing some other economic development work in our offices and supporting a number of things, but really his main focus is on the contract with you all for outreach services. So I want to say a few words to Steele.
Happy to be here. There's a great team at the chamber that I'm working with. And things are going great this week too.
Yep, and I've been real excited to be able to connect him to a number of things that are happening already in our rural communities. Thought we'd use the opportunity in public forum to make the introduction today.
Great, very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you all.
Look forward to working with you.
And Linda, I'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to make comments? I'm not seeing any. Go ahead and close. Public forum number two, moving on to leave on assignments and committee meeting updates and announcements. Who would like to start?
I will. Tonight is the City of Ames Climate Action Plan workshop. So I'll be attending that. I was appointed to the supplemental committee for that tomorrow. I've got several, I'm on the hiring committee for the Center for Creative Justice, the new director. I have several interviews tomorrow evening and Thursday evening. I have an alternatives, child diversion, team meeting on Thursday. We've got facilities recognition Thursday morning. And American Rescue Act Plan meeting Thursday afternoon. Is that on your calendars too?
I have facilities recognition on the ninth, not the second.
Oh.
Yeah, it is next Thursday.
It's the second?
The next Thursday.
The ninth, okay.
And then more interviews for CCJ on Friday. Space needs meeting Friday. And as I'm sitting here, getting emails about interviews for the scan director position I'm on that hiring committee too. So I'm going to be doing a lot of some interviews for the next few weeks. I believe that's it.
Just a second. Calendar's not behaving. Got a meeting this afternoon with emergency management with a small group. We're looking at microgrid, the solar crate that had been over at the City of Ames for a while and whether we might have some uses in the county. Something like that, if we can find some funding, is preliminary kind of thing we're looking at. Rescue Plan meeting. We have a meeting at the Ames History Museum this afternoon. And tomorrow morning going to county with Brenda, as I discussed, we're going to talk about workforce training with folks over there. And a bottomless committee of emergency management commission tomorrow evening. And do we have an ARP meeting today or Thursday? I've got it.
Thursday.
It's not today. That'll make today a little easier, but. Also, the work session Friday on space needs. And I've got a couple of other small meetings just on some ideas that are kind of being kicked around. I'm looking into the legislation on the EMS services, the levy and the can be, it's for central services, looking at that, looking at, trying to develop a problem statement, just what the issue is right now with EMS and the county issues. And just working a little bit more with some folks on that. Hope to have something to present sometime in the next few weeks, just to discuss that sometime. That's pretty much what I've got at this point.
I'm going to attend the, say this, not that, training tomorrow morning. I have the ARPA on us, ARPA meeting for Wednesday as well. I hopefully will have some information by Wednesday because I had reached out to both our civil attorney and to ISAC on that application question that we had from the Iowa code section. I have not heard back yet, but ISAC just had their conference. So I'm sure they were a little busy. And then I know our county attorney's office has been very busy as well. So hopefully I have some information by that. Our next ISAC work group for ARPA is not until September 8th. So if I don't have anything, I would assume I will have it by them. I also have the work study, excuse me, the space study session on my calendar as well. A lot of part of this week so far is a little bit light. That doesn't mean that that's going to, that isn't going to change right after this meeting ends and stuff, so. Kind of on my agenda right now. With that, their motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Merkin, aye. Basil, aye. Devin's aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.